Yeah, yeah, it's getting a little off the water. I said on the thing that I'm thinking about. It's a neat slide. I'm saying like, you know. Oh, yeah. I have to write it. So. Yeah. Hey. Yeah. Yeah. He's got that. Of course. Yeah, like, well, familiar again. I'll see you in class. It's actually. There's this one that was like, um, I think you're. You know, something. Yeah. They have thought of.
Should you have his number? Okay. See you.
I didn't answer that. Some thirty twenty pounds from the house.
Yeah. Separate. Separate, uh, horn. Yeah, one of them. Right. I don't know some of these. And he's had years. Some of these. What is. And we've got the. Kind of thing goes. Yeah. I mean, just. So I'm still in a, um, a case in, um, Rockbridge County. But it's, it's everybody. It's never gonna be a defense issue. I don't know that much. It's not able for where.
Justice, not really, but no.
Yeah. Now, I made the judge, there's a, um, opposing counsel. This year. That's, I can't hear you. It means that I want. Let's say. I'm trying. It was just, it was a, uh. Put your back and forth. You have. Yeah. So. Um, I should. It's just right. Now, we're real. Yeah. Did you get it on point? We got it on point. No. I didn't hear. Not a lot of chat. Much of things. Actually, these are. No, we're. All safe. Pretty much. I don't know. For the criminal. To see. Yeah.
Yes. Well, we, we, we can go ahead and do this thing. Because he. Yeah. He's not the legal one.
Okay, she's open. Okay, that's fine. Okay. And we can, you know, force. Five minutes. Uh, it's still a form. Probably five, five minutes. So we need to be forced to sit down. Who's there? Okay.
I'll call the meeting of the, oh, Madison County Board of Zoning Appeals Workshop to order, please. And we're gonna dispense with. The call to order, the pledge of allegiance and all that. And. I guess we're gonna move straight to number five, the resolution of the validity of appeals.
Okay, uh, you wanna do pledge allegiance? No, we can, we can. Okay. Uh, so, on the meeting schedule, just as a FYI, has everyone seen that? It's okay. I think that we should probably continue in Europe for space. Um, so, uh, I did recreation park, although it does conclude that. So we do though. I guess we're on the fourth Monday, or third Monday? The third Monday. So we will go with the third Tuesday, if that's okay. Um, since they have that first Monday. Otherwise, if we do have a meeting, that's how we'll schedule it. Right now. Okay. Um. Otherwise, if we do have a meeting, that's how we'll schedule it. Right now. Okay. Um. On number five, so, the validity of appeals and, um, essentially, we have two items here. Just a clarification, this is, this is not a public hearing, this is a workshop. A work session. So we're gonna talk about the potential that the DCA members here, uh, which, uh, Ms. Long is a. A spokesman, also our secretary, so she will serve since one person's missing, she's serving. As a regular member tonight, and also the secretary. I. A little background, um, with A and B, I'll just go with A first, and then discuss B. Mr. Chairman, if you wanna recognize, you wanna the ordinance to speak or having to speak, as we do, that is a totally good expression. I think we've been pretty generous in the past, letting people have their say. Um. So, on September third, CW had submitted this application for a wireless facility, uh, cell tower in the new area of Madison. Uh, I just told people, you know, I've been doing this for a little while. I, I've set a little ordinance, our community wireless facility ordinance. It's pretty technically complicated, and there are a lot of different parts to it. It's probably about sixteen, seventeen year old warrants as far as that's a hell. Uh, and in my many years of working this type of work, this is about a thorough of an application as we get on intent. And from a planning's perspective, always point out that cell towers are quite interesting, and they, they don't generate traffic. Um, they don't really have many utility needs. Uh, they're not exactly, you know, the most psychic, I mean, in the world. So, we get that. So this was dropped off September third. The applicant paid the fee, put the application out. Uh, there was a little bit of talk with the applicant. Now, I will say, as far as this particular application, you know, they had done some of the requirements of the ordinance, one of the sort of main requirements, they called balloon test. We actually go up and fly balloon in the height of the tower would be. In this case, it was one ninety-nine, but they kind of brought it down to one seventy-five. Uh, you know, I think it was October of nineteen that actually did the balloon test. Um, so, the application's kind of moving forward to a certain degree, just didn't know, uh, exactly when we would, would receive it. But it ended up, and again, the balloon test fall, they fall nineteen. Uh, we were waiting, waiting, you could do that, it would come eventually. We get the application on September third. When I get the application, uh, the applicant had sort of a conflict. You know, generally what we do, we get the application, you know, we make sure everything's built out properly. We, you know, in this case, we've got a hundred plus places, one site planned. We put it all the docket for the next joint meeting. So September was, it was October. Now, there was a conflict that the applicant had, we even had another meeting in October. So I said, hey, let's, you know, it's fine, if you have a conflict in October, we'll just do, we'll just do the meeting. No trouble. Gives us more time. No, no, no harm. Uh, so, received the application. Uh, it was set for a note of report public hearing. Notice went on the paper. Uh, on October sixteenth, uh, we received, uh, on October sixteenth, I sent out a letter notice, just a typical letter, and that's in there, and people have that in the packet. We have just a letter, uh, that required of state code, uh, informing adjacent and nearby landowners. And we really kind of spread the, uh, the notices out above and beyond what is, what is, you know, required by statute. Uh, we, you know, we put, uh, sent letters out, I guess it was, you know, at least a dozen eighteen each. So let them know November fourth is this hearing. Uh, on the afternoon of November fourth, uh, I guess a few hours before our hearing, uh, I got a, an application that's in your packet for a, an appeal. Uh, the order zoning appeals, and basically, it's a, the appeal. I had a hard time understanding the appeal when it came in. Been doing this for a while, but I didn't quite understand, but the appeal was essentially, and has been clearly stated in the packet that we have, that it was, that the appeal was on the completeness of the application. These would be the letter that went out on October sixteenth was their sort of, you know, what the, the, the agreed parties here sort of pointed as, was this being complete. Um. That's the letter that we sent to, to adjoining landowners. It makes no reference to being complete, it just says we have an application, this is what's being heard on this date. Uh, I, I did accept the application, uh, even though, again, I was having a hard time understanding it. I did accept the application, and immediately, our legal counsel, Mr. Taves, sort of contacted him, and this sort of started, started this sort of process in the back for, the counsel for the agreed party, uh, and, and whatnot. So, if we go back, yeah, I won't go to the timeline, we see the number twelve letter, Mr. Taves has sent to the counsel for, um, the agreed parties. Um, they respond, we respond. So, essentially, what has happened is, to the advice of counsel, I'll let him take the floor here, discuss this, but, uh, he did not believe, as I did not believe, that this is something that is, something that is a field of the DCA. Um, having stated that, um, the idea was, and we'll get to case B in a minute, we'll talk, finish this one, was to let the DCA have a workshop, with the facts, the correspondence, and determine if this is something that you would accept, potentially here or not. So I've said that, um, if it's okay, chairman, I'll put Mr. Taves, if you, everything, you know.
Please do.
Good evening. I'm Pat Taves, um, counsel for, uh, Madison County in this matter. The, uh, county attorney had a conflict, so he had to step aside maybe, they brought me in. Um, I'd like to hand out something to y'all. Given, uh, I'm sorry. I've given copies to counsel for, uh, Mr. Rother and, uh, CWS. Let me state, first of all, no worries, I'm not gonna read that entire statute to y'all. I just ask you all to turn first to, in the statute, page eight oh six. That's the fourth, uh, fourth page. Now, the application that, that was, is before, or was before the board supervisors on November fourth, was for a telecommunications facility, wireless telecommunications facility. Your special law with respect to those types of uses in Virginia, I've given it to you. So, you turn to page eight oh six. Please take a look at paragraph C one. The only issue raised in these appeals relates to the completeness of the application. The only issue. As you can see from paragraph C one, that I handed to you, makes it very clear that the application here filed September third. Ten business days later, no notice of incompleteness. Under that paragraph C one, that application was deemed complete on September eighteenth. The tenth business day after the final, actually, the eleventh business day after the final. That's the law. So, as you may have seen in the letters that, that I wrote that are part of your package, make it very clear that that is the law. That binds not just Mr. Webb, binds board supervisors, binds the DCA. It's the law. As a matter of law, the application was deemed complete because we didn't, we didn't have any notice of incompleteness. So, that's first issue. Me, that's the sponsor, so it's all a thing. It says the only issue in the appeals, one on November fourth, one on November twenty-fifth, is whether or not the application was complete. It's very simple. Even if we didn't have that statute, I would argue two other points. One is, in these applications, there wasn't any determination. You can look at the notice or your package, the October sixteen, two thousand twenty notice. That notice doesn't say one word about whether the application was complete. Wasn't a determination, the notice wasn't a determination that the application was complete. The notice was a notice. Oh, it was. Second appeal they filed, three weeks, more than three weeks after that application for the wireless facility was approved by board supervisors. They raised completeness again. You can look at Mr. Webb's staff report. Mr. Webb's staff report is not a determination of completeness. Says nothing about whether or not the application was complete. So they're trying to create a determination, then feel that to upset the apple cart with respect to the wireless facility application. Can't do that. Can't do it first because, as a matter of law, it's deemed complete. And then second, you can't feel anything to DCA unless it's actually a determination. There's no determination there, not on the issue they're raising. You can read it ten ways to Sunday, and you won't see anything in either the notice or the staff report about completeness. Finally, I would tell you that one of the other rules about appeals to the DCA is the party appealing to the DCA has to be agreed. Mr. Rother and his LLC, they're not agreed at all by the notice. Notice just gave notice. They're not agreed by, by the notice, they're not agreed by the staff report. They didn't, they weren't harmed at all. And if you're not harmed by the determination, I'm just assuming for the sake of argument that it's a determination. First, it has to be, it isn't. Second, it has to be something that harms you so you can be agreed, and then feel the order zoning appeals. Didn't harm them. The notice just told Mr. Rother, his neighbors, anybody else who was interested, that on November four, we're gonna have a public hearing. And that's all it said. And that, that notice is required by law. I would tell you that if you don't accept what I said, certainly hope you wouldn't object what I said. But if you don't accept what I say, and you accept what Mr. Rother's attorney is gonna tell you, here's, here's the precedent that you set. Of course, for every special use permit in Madison County, every one, you have a notice that's sent out to the public, give a public notice about the public hearing. Well, guess what? If you accept what they say, that there's an automatic stay, even if you file a bogus appeal, then anybody who wants to come in on the day of a public hearing and stall things and take it off the docket, if they're right, and I'm wrong, anybody who's not agreed, there's no determination, is deemed complete, anybody could file an appeal like that and say, well, it's automatic stay, so therefore, you can't have your public hearing. And that's exactly what happened here, what they tried to do here. Because we came here on November fourth, land commission team here, board supervisors was here. I left my, I, I had my office in Fairfax. I left my office in Fairfax a couple hours before. Drive down here, I didn't know anything about any appeal. Citizens who came to here for the public hearing, they didn't know anything about any appeal. So we had to make a decision, and we made that decision. I advised that the application is complete, being complete in September, they can't feel that, can't make up an issue like that. So. We don't think, I don't think respectfully, that you have a valid application, either one. Is it one on November fourth or the one on November twenty-fifth? The one on November twenty-fifth has the additional failure of the issue being moved. Because they filed an appeal on November twenty-fifth on completeness, three weeks and one day after board supervisors had approved that application. That's moved. So, at the end of the day today, I will tell you, I'm gonna hand you some motions. I don't represent the DCA, represent the county, represent the board of supervisors, but I can give you some motions that I would submit, y'all may wanna consider, to deny these applications for the reasons I've stated. Be glad to answer any questions if y'all have any. Thank you very much. Obviously, I have too much paper. Thank you.
Then, I just, you do, Mr. Shannon, is it okay if you?
Yes. Do you, you representing the Rothers?
I represent the Rothers.
Okay.
And again, uh, good evening. Oh, that's over here on, uh, Christmas. Um, so again, since this is a work session, it's a little torn off in terms of, of the process. Uh, counsel did let me know, Mr. Wade, the juris counsel, let me know that he assumed that you may want to hear from me, uh, on these issues. You know, part of this is process, this is a process issue. The DCA, uh, is a citizen oversight board, appointed by courts, as y'all know, and you hear variances, which are legislative type actions and appeals. And when the variance comes forward, Mr. Langen, Mr. Webb gets together the application for the variance, goes to make sure all the boxes are checked, submits it to the court consideration. It's not litigation. On seventeen point six, the appeal were challenging what Mr. Webb did, and were saying, that wasn't right. We disagree with that decision, or if it was an order of violation, we disagree. There's a different process for it. That's where the DCA is acting more than judicial type of manner, you know, not the legislative where they're looking and considering an application. And the code and the ordinance provides that immediately, the entire file just gets shipped off to the DCA because they're challenging the weather. Again, I've sat on, uh, the city board of Northern Virginia, Alexandria, I've been in services for ten years. I know how much, as a board member, you provide staff to organize materials, to circulate it. And so it's, it's difficult when you are going back against that staff and saying, well, wait a second, someone's challenging what you did, you did it the right way or not. And that's what we're doing, this is a process issue. And so, part of the process is, we disagree with what Mr. Webb did, and we challenge that to termination decision, but it's an appeal. And he doesn't get to say, well, wait a second, you don't, you didn't check this box, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. It's an appeal. So if you're gonna take the position of his, uh, special counsel, Mr. Taves, you know, he's making the argument that it's moved. Well, those are determinations that the board would hear at a public hearing. This is different, this is a hearing, a work session that is in public, but it's not a public hearing. There, there's a number of citizens here that say, yeah, we, we think that this was. There, there's a number of citizens here that say, yeah, we think that this was a rubber stamp, this wasn't done the right way. Then they have the ability to voice that public hearing and have that decision that the DCA made. So, at a public hearing, we can present our entire case. We can say, we disagree. We can provide some of these arguments about the telecommunications. This isn't about that. This is about an appeal. And the check was accepted, the things were done, and then they say, well, that wasn't a real appeal. There was no determination. And the argument is, the person who's in charge of the gatekeeper can't, you're challenging that person, can't be the one that decides. It's supposed to go right through the DCA. What's interesting is the state code, we talk about variances. We talk about compiling the information and then submitting it to, that is, the zoning director or the zoning administrator. And that's because it's legislative. When it's an appeal, it's very simple. Everything just goes, they don't have to say. So, you can oversight the planning commissioner, the county planner, however you want to call it. But it is a process issue. So, here, I don't represent the DCA, I don't represent Mr. Webb, I represent the applicant. This was a work session that I was noticed that, hey, they may want to hear from you. I'm not making the substantive arguments of what I'd say about the site planner, or not site planner, but the application. This is a, in the DCA, I think we should hold a public hearing because we're Kentucky's one. And if the DCA determines that, you know, that application, you think everything is right, we did his job, or we don't think you should be able to challenge that, fine. But what we have to follow is the rules that are printed, and rules under the Madison County Code. You're right, they're not setting a precedent. I disagree with counsel. You're following the rules. If the county planner, the planning commissioner, or the Board Supervisors wants to change the rules, they're allowed to. You can't change them in the middle of the game. So, the appeal process shall be mailed. We did that. We handled it, we mailed it, we sent it to all the right people that we're supposed to, we raised the issues. There's not a form on the website, we created a form to those appeals, we identified ourselves, we identified the party, to date, the applicant, at least I'm not aware of the applicant, saying, hey, you guys got to speed this up, they're trying to slow this down. You filed an appeal. It's a legal right. It's a process issue. Now, again, you may lose, you may win. But the point is that we have that opportunity to be heard, as the public has the opportunity to participate in a very simple rule. The appeals process can be, Board Supervisors can admit this next month, because they can have a public hearing, they put the planning commissioner, say, hey, look, this is Board zoning deals, we need to go ahead and give them more rules, and we need to have some more fair processes and procedures. They're all different. Every jurisdiction has diff, almost different rules. The state code has a section, as does the local ordinance. If you're a city, you have charters, or if you're a town, you have charters. They are infected. Again, this is a process issue, where we want to have an appeal, with a properly noted public hearing, and have people explain, have us stay our position to the DCA on the substance of our argument. And that's what this is. So, again, as this work session, I'm not sitting here, I mean, I'm more than happy at an appeal, at a hearing, to actually argue the substance about the telecommunications act. I understand that's an argument, I had an argument for that as well. And I, I do think that maybe the DCA says, well, let's just hear the argument now, let's just do it now. I don't think that's the proper process, I don't think this is the venue. A properly noted hearing, a public hearing, to have that, I think is the way to do this, not at a work session. Yeah, it's, you know, a little weird talking during a work session, other jurisdictions, they don't normally do that, but if the board says, hey, if you want to hear him talk, then I'm going to respond. So, if you want to hear me, I'm having you to respond. But again, even the notice for this was, hey, I assume they might want to hear them. So, that's why I'm here, if you want to hear them, yeah, I think the proper process, and this is a process issue, that we have is a public hearing, these rights to come before the citizen oversight board to challenge the planning director's decision. Again, you can make the citizen have that time of saying, well, we don't think it's valid. But right now, the process doesn't say, you file an appeal, wait for the zoning administrator, the zoning county planner, to see if it's valid, then send it to the DCA, have a work session determine if it's valid, and then we'll have a public hearing, 16, 19, 20. I mean, this is supposed to be much more quickly processed than what we're doing right now. And again, these are going to come up, there's no form on the website that says this is it. If this is not an application, this is an appeal. If you look at 17-6, where it said, the board shall take some reasonable time for a hearing of an application or appeal. This is an appeal, this is an application. You don't need to Google Mr. Webb to, to challenge his decision. Because that sort of goes against the whole process, the due process where, first, he goes, well, let me let you know, you can challenge my decision. Then I'll let you know. If the DCA, if they want to say, here's a work session, well, we don't think we should have them hear their argument, or hear their decision, hear that appeal, because we're going to decide it before actually hearing. So, yeah, this is a process issue. I thank you for your time tonight. I think I apologize that we're here on December 22nd, but, you know, I hope that we're able to be back down here in January and actually get to the substance of this. Do you see what, you guys have any questions?
No. I don't.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Do you want to respond?
Yes.
In your package, you have a letter from me, Mr. Shannon, dated November 12th. At that time, we had, Mr. Lick and Mr. Webb and I, we and I had identified the issues that I'm telling you about today. This, this appeal is defective. This appeal isn't valid for the reasons that I've stated today, the reasons I stated in the letter dated November 12th. Mr. Shannon, gentleman who's just up here, he wrote back to Mr. Webb in an email, a piece of package to, email dated November 16th, and he said, you know, you shouldn't decide this, Mr. Webb, whether or not the appeal is valid, that's for the DCA to decide. So, we got together, Mr. Webb and I got together, and I said, you know, they want to take it to the DCA, they want the DCA to decide whether or not they have a valid appeal. They got a point. We're trying to do them a favor to avert having to go through this with the DCA, having to go through this for its client. Not a valid deal, and the fact that, that we're here today doesn't make it any less, any more valid than it was on November 12th, or even November 4th. Not valid, can't go forward for the reasons I've stated. Not if it's already been deemed complete, and that's the only issue you're raising. Not if there's no determination, and you're trying to appeal a non-determination. Not if there's no harm. And not if there's, there's not an agreed person. You can't find anybody on the street and say, well, I think I'll file an appeal today with the DCA, and I'll halt this public hearing. Can't do that. Got to meet all these requirements. And here, it's real easy. I mean, this, Mr. Shannon said he had an argument, or has arguments about the telecom act. I know what the, I, I'm, there are very few issues that I've ever dealt with in my 40 years, perhaps, and one of them are more clearer than this issue that I showed you in that statute. Very few issues that are that clear. It's not just a process thing. They don't get a hearing, they don't meet each of those requirements. And they didn't want Mr. Webb and I telling them that, they weren't willing to accede to that, they want y'all to tell them that. And I'd say, please tell them that. So, I have for you, like, you know, four motions. You have two, two, and this, two motions for each of the appeals. So, what I said, that makes it sound like a lot more motions, but they're, they're very similar. For each of these two separate appeals, there's a lengthy motion, then a short motion. Sometimes, I'll get back up to show you.
Because you got one, right?
Yeah.
So, as you can see, I delineated those motions, one lengthy motion for appeal number one. That appeal number one is the November 4 appeal of the notice. And what goes along with that is, if you don't want to read the entirety of appeal number one, or the motion, you can read the short.
Right.
See, your option. I wouldn't dange to tell you what to do, I'd just argue that.
We like it short.
And then we have the same thing for the.
Right.
For the other, the other appeal. Appeal number two is the, the November 25th appeal, which was filed three weeks and one day after the application for the wireless facility was approved. I should mention, we've got Mr. Butch Davies here, who represents, some of you may know him. He represents CWS. He represents the applicant. I don't know whether Butch, you want to talk or not, maybe, maybe he thinks I've picked up.
Mr. Davies, would you like to say anything?
I think you've heard enough from Lloyd this tonight.
Hell, what's one more?
Mr. Shannon, I think you've talked me right. You want to hear anything more, please, I'd budge you, those are the guys here. But other than that, I'm, I'm finished.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I came in, I had.
Please.
And I would be very grateful, because I agree with my counsel, and probably everyone in the room, to me, Lloyd, it's not a good thing here. I just, for purposes, if the, during this work session, if you're going to make a motion, I don't think you need to make a motion, I think we can simply set up a hearing, and I'd be willing, in terms of just consolidating the two appeals, so just one hearing, in terms of just having one hearing, then you can hear all of them. If that, instead of having two separate processes and procedures, so if you were to set this for a hearing in January, according to the schedule, I think that's one of the reasons, that it would just be one for, for both of them, to consolidate the time into, do what we're just doing, take up less time. Try to do it, take up less time. But again, I do think that when you look at that staff report that you have from November 19th, where the director says, you know, that you can't appeal a DCA report, a staff report, and things of that nature, I disagree. I think that if you can, it's a deal, and we're entitled to a hearing on those issues, a full hearing, and that is a topic. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I think everything was laid out in front of you. I will just say, just, you know, us working with you folks for the last year and a half, and people coming to the office, the general process, someone comes in, you know, we know lot sizes, setbacks, those are the kind of nuts involved, so what we deal with, those are the things that, you know, are easy, clear, administrative decisions. If you would deny, we may appeal if you like. I think Mr. Taves has laid out my initial reaction to both of these challenges, and we know that there are other, you know, record of this. I just think that this is an easy way. This is a legislative decision that was made. They're agreeing about the legislative decision based on some technical issues of, you know, determinations, it's a snap. This is not administrative denial, and that, I think we're, you know, we've made our case. But, you know, what follows means, think about it. They do have other avenues for relief, if they truly believe, you know, so that's just sort of others leave that.
Okay. Thank you, Leagann. Well, I can speak for myself. I don't think they have a valid appeal on either case, I'll be honest with you. But, you know, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion to that effect?
If someone would like to make it, please.
I would be happy to make a motion to deny those, both of the appeals as deficient.
Second. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to say something?
Yes, sir.
I just ask if you would do that, make it clear for the grounds, if you, if you would, we go to the short form motions, that would be greatly appreciated, would make it very clear exactly what we're doing here.
Okay. So, you want me to read these, or what?
Those are fine, that's what I would.
Okay. All members of the Board of Zoning Appeals present today have before them a lengthy type motion that proposes to deny the appeal application filed by Mr. Rothen and Belmont Farm LLC on November 4th, 2020. I move that the DCA approve that lengthy type motion in its entirety, and a copy of that motion be entered and put into the record for this case. Is that what you wanted to hear?
Second and vote on it.
All right.
Got a motion to second?
I second it.
I would say, all in favor of all?
Aye.
That's on both of them, or I can, I can read the next one, too. That was number one.
That was number one.
All the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals present today have before them a lengthy type motion that proposes to deny the appeal application filed by Mr. Rothen Belmont Farm LLC on November 25th, 2020. I move that the DCA approve that lengthy type motion in its entirety, and add a copy of that motion to be entered and put into record for this case.
I'm going to motion that it be open.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to sign them?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we could talk. Okay, so I guess meeting is adjourned? That's right.